Okay. We'll call the meeting back to order under announcements. Bill Pelosi's vitals have stabilized. He is at the emergency room over there. He's going to be seeing a doctor at 7:00. And I will keep you posted. And he misses us. And with that in mind, we are going to take Item C and D under Municipal Services and hold those over to the next time that Bill is here and we do the Municipal Services section. If everyone is comfortable with that. That way, those of you who are normally going to have to stay for that late can leave now if that works okay. Great. Let's talk about Section or Item B, Veterans and Human Services Levies Funds. And I was wondering, Shelley, if you could give us an overview of that, how it's collected, the proposed change, and the impact to us, and just bring us back up to speed.
I can't discuss about the proposed changes. I do know that it's 10 cents per thousand, the levy. I looked at it today online to get some ideas, but I don't know what the changes are between what this six-year levy has and what the next six years has. I don't know if Human Services has that information. But I do know that it's about 350 million over the six years. So if you average that, that's a little bit less than $60 million a year. And the city does not collect any of that revenue. That revenue is all retained at King County for programs that they administer countywide. And I was able to get a link this morning from Erica via Dana. And what you see up there, because I kind of thought that you probably want to know, well, how does Auburn benefit from these funds? And there are, let me pull up that email from Erica and Dana this morning that they sent me. And there are about nine or 10 organizations here in the city that receive this funding. And I can list them off real quick, or I can, okay. YWCA Children's Home Society, they do play and learn. Spirit Fest, mobile medical van. Auburn Library, they have a play and learn. White River Gardens, supported housing. Health Point, First United Methodist Church, mobile medical van. Green River College Vet Corps. YWCA Worksource Employment Assistance. Valley Cities Landing. Valley Cities Phoenix Rising. Valley Cities Veteran PTSD Treatment. Terry Home Two for TBI, Traumatic Brain Injury Treatment and Housing. There are no dollars associated with that. Oh, and additionally, they do work out of Score Facility up in. But these little dots, to give you an idea, if you click on, let's see how good my hand eye is. It tells you this is where the Worksource, YWCA is. And so that's what I can tell you about how Auburn benefits. So these are all individual contracts, and I don't know what the funding is.
Could you read that list, the first six of them, again?
YWCA Children's Home Society, that's play and learn activities. Spirit Fest, mobile medical van. Auburn Library, play and learn. White River Gardens, supported housing. Health Point. And First United Methodist Church, they have a mobile medical van also.
So probably they operate, I would guess, the same way as our Human Services. These organizations prepare annually grants with outcomes and submit it to King County's organizational group, and then they make the allocations.
I would think that they have a process to do something like that, and then they look through. I glanced out online at some of these things. This is the third six-year levy. I don't know if you're aware of that. And they have reports for each year out there under this levy. They call it the V H S L levy. It's an acronym they use. So if you go into the King County website, type in V H S L, it'll bring up the program and all the things that they do. It has tons of information.
Yes, Councilmember Troutman.
Is there any way you could get us that information to send me to?
I can send you all the link. It might be pretty copious to print it all out, but I can send you the link.
So apparently, they're doing a lot with medical and other things. Are they doing anything as it relates to homeless veterans?
Yes. They do have benchmarks out there. And to go out, they tell you what they've spent on housing. At the beginning of the levy, they spent more on housing. And what they do with a lot of the individuals that they assist, like the veterans, they get them job training, they get them self-sustainable, get them into housing so they can move on. And seniors, they're also providing services to assist them in homelessness and also for isolation, to make sure that they're out and about.
And they don't, veterans, they don't get their medical through some of the military medical facilities? They're going to Health Point and an Auburn health van and that kind of stuff?
I have no idea about that.
Okay, I'm just curious. Maybe we'll ask Dana maybe in the next year or so to help us figure that one out.
I am not.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you.
Okay.
The next item on here is Item C, Community Meetings and Quorums. And Dan, maybe you can help us with this. Yeah, I'm sure you can. Because this is the one you're always, you know, giving us wise counsel on. What I'm trying to figure out, because some people have come to me, and they may feel comfortable speaking up, but when we have a community meeting that's other than here, such as, or a meeting such as maybe going to Sound Cities Association Meeting, or one of the neighborhood picnics, or the Santa Parade, where we're all standing out in front, and there is a quorum of council members. When is it necessary to do a notice that there's going to be a quorum of us, and when is it not necessary?
The easiest answer I can give you is if it's somebody else's meeting, and you're going, for instance, to Sound Cities, or even Washington State Legislature, or a legislative city group for AWC, that is their meeting.
Okay.
And that is not there to discuss or transact business for the city of Auburn.
Okay.
The danger points occur, or escalate certainly, if there is a quorum for or more city council members, and the meeting gravitates to, or was intended to, or results in a public discussion of city business. And the reason I say that is because it isn't just a taking a vote, it isn't just a consideration of resolutions or ordinances. The Open Public Meetings Act describes action as including discussion. So if there is discussion about city issues, and there is a quorum for or more council members, then we have a potential meeting. Now, having said that, I want you to think about it in terms of the global aspect of it. If there are four members there, and you are, even if only one council member says something, but you've got four or more there, you're hearing, or receiving, or considering testimony, consideration, discussion. That's enough to trigger the meeting requirements, which would then have required that to have been noticed as a special meeting, and not only that, but keep minutes, et cetera. A special meeting is different than a regular meeting because you cannot add anything to it. So if you don't have an agenda, that's a problem. If you go beyond what might have been the intended purpose, if there was an agenda, that's a problem. And if there is a quorum with a discussion, again, if that discussion includes or is within the acceptance or receipt of a quorum, then that's where a public meeting would be triggered. If you have something less than that, a social gathering, and I think that there have been a number of social gatherings where people are not there to discuss city business, that's okay. That's not a meeting. You're not discussing city business. However, if you had something like that, and all of a sudden, a discussion gravitated towards city issues, then that could become a public meeting, and that's when you'd have to have, you have to put the brakes on.
So, Councilmember Troutman.
So on those community picnics, and there's four of us there, but we're all separated, and we are in different groups talking to constituents, that's considered a quorum?
Well, to answer it the way you described it, conceivably not. It's when all of the, when four or more of the quorum are in a position to hear or receive or transmit the discussion.
The reason why I'm saying that is because there was an incident just recently where there was four of us. I was the fourth one. I was not aware that Mr. Backus was back from vacation, so I went to one of the picnics. And your attorney, Doug, came up to me and told me I had to be very careful because there was a quorum, yet I wasn't around the other people. And two constituents heard it. And they go, why are you being reprimanded? And I go, well, it's because there's four of us, and they're concerned of us talking, having a quorum and talking about city issues.
Let me throw this out to you, just as an apology, if that's what it calls for. I don't want you to feel you're reprimanded if I were to say to you, or Doug were to say to you, or someone else were to say to you, you want to be careful. That's just good advice.
Right. And I understand that.
You don't want to engage in a discussion which could involve a quorum. And I'm going to throw this out too, is maybe where Doug was coming from, is you don't know whether that could occur two minutes later.
Well, I think you guys have drilled that into us, that we know better than to, you know, consider a conversation that's going to, you know, bring up issues. And so it was, you know, it was just kind of, made me feel kind of like I was a child being told that I couldn't be there. And because we're all aware of our, you know, what our quorum is and how we should handle ourselves. So that's why I brought it, and I talked to several other council members as well. And that's why we decided that we needed to bring it to the table.
Well, let me throw this out to you, just as, and I don't want this to sound like I'm scolding anybody, but it's always a good idea to exercise care and caution whenever there is going to be a quorum. And I'll tell you what might be a risk that you might not anticipate. What if you're talking to a group over here, another council member's talking to a group over here, another council member's talking to a group over here, and you're all separate, but all of a sudden, somebody raises an issue that is brought to the entire group's attention, you're all now reassembled into conceivably a meeting. And that might be, you know, that, I don't, I know that Doug wouldn't have scolded you. I think what he would have said is, you need to be careful. I think that everybody needs to be careful whenever there is a quorum.
He did say that. I was standing with three of the other police officers because I knew that there was four of us at that time. So I moved away from the other council members that were there, and I stood with our police officers and was talking to them when two constituents came up. And they were talking to the police officers about some things. And then that's when Doug came up to me and says, Mrs. Trout, you need to be careful. Remember, there's four of you here, and that makes a quorum. So I go, I understand, that's why I'm over here, you know. But I understand the situation, how you explained it to us about if something was to arise, then we're all implicated in it. But at that time, it wasn't like that.
Well, and the only reason I say the exercise of caution is because it could occur, even though nobody intended it, nobody planned on it, no council member had anticipated that somebody would raise an issue in that picnic to bring it to everybody's attention. Hey, wait a minute, I'd like to ask everybody, get everybody's opinion about that. If you're within earshot, you're in the meeting. And that, and that may be something that's maybe unplanned or outside of your intended purpose.
That's something under the term of, when does a gaggle become a quorum?
Well, it is kind of, you're right, John. When does a social event really become, now, and this was to have, you know, to give our constituents an opportunity to meet and greet, and they could have asked questions, so.
That becomes where it could be risky. But as a social, and this is, again, I know that we've had this conversation. A social event, you're going to all get together at a picnic among yourselves, and there's clearly a quorum, and you're there only for the purpose of visiting, not city business. That's perfectly fine. What I would say is, my best advice is, if somebody said, hey, wait a minute, while we're all here, let's talk about such and such. The answer or response by everybody ought to be, hold on, no, this is not the place. We don't want to turn something that is not a city meeting into a city meeting that then creates a violation that somebody could complain about.
And I think, as I've talked to some of my council members here, that we're aware of that, and we are very careful not to talk about business when there's more of us together. And I think we've been doing really well, you know, with that. But it was just, you know, as I said, I did not know Mr. Bagu was back, and so that's why I attended that picnic, and then to be told, you've got to be careful that.
But again, just so that you understand where I'm coming from, it could occur outside of anybody's planning. What if somebody else said, hey, wait a minute, before you all leave, I want to ask a question, and starts asking questions about something or discussing something? You may be the unintended recipient of comments that are now problematic because of a quorum. So that's where you've got to be careful. And the easy, the easiest thing to do is, if you're a quorum, if you're one of four or more, you need to be in charge of that and say, hold on, wait a minute, we can't talk about that in a quorum, or one of us needs to leave, or whatever you need to do. But you're in charge of that part of it.
I think that's good advice.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Dan. Thank you. But, oh, Mayor Backus, please.
Thank you. So that's the intent with those community picnics, is that there are group discussions, which is why, for the last two years, we have asked for council members to sign up for specific picnics so they could attend, and we know there is not a quorum. Because typically, at those picnics, we have the microphone there, and it is an entire group asking questions. That becomes a violation of the Open Public Meeting Act, which is why we ask that we do not have a quorum at those functions. So we're trying to eliminate an opportunity for that to take place. So that's why we asked everyone to sign up and attend those picnics that they signed up for.
Can we have the record show that Councilmember Wagner's here? Thank you for joining us. Thank you. We knew you could answer it for us. So I don't have to worry at the Santa Parade.
Santa Parade, we're worried about Santa and what you're on this or not.
Okay.
And what you're talking about.
And what I'm, yeah. We're going to move on to the use of city facilities, and this is something that Bob and I have some questions about. Recently, I had an opportunity to meet with a group over there at the River Walk, and they have historically, and I maybe am using that term loosely, but they have in the past been able to use the chamber and some of the conference rooms for their meetings of their homeowners association. And they now had, they shared with me, now they meet at Algonah. So I kind of wanted to bring up the question of who's able to use the people's house here, and what are the guidelines on who do we contact, and that type of. You're facilities manager, huh?
No, I'm not.
Oh, good.
But we're dealing with something that has legal implications.
Oh, good, good. Did you want to comment on that, or?
No, not too much. I just will say a couple of things. We had met here at City Hall for two of my homeowner associations for years. And the city was very gracious to let us use their conference rooms, and every once in a while, we had to use the council chambers for an annual meeting. However, because we were told that they were going to limit the use of the facilities in the evening hours to strictly city business, and that we were asked basically to find another facility for meeting, which we did. And Valley Cities was gracious enough to let us use their facilities. And then we were asked to move from there, just recently, primarily because of their conversion of their community rooms to, or meeting rooms to, for the homeless. So we have, I'm now down to one homeowner association. So I have arranged with my residents at the park, the river, to use the clubhouse. But it, we were basically told it was because of the technology and what have you that the city was putting into the facilities here, and the risk of possible damage to some of the facilities, even though we had never had a problem. I thought it was, I was a little surprised at the time that we were basically singled out. I felt I was being singled out, because we've never had any problem with any of the people, you know, defacing or tampering with any of the facilities. And I was usually there to oversee the meetings to begin with, and being on the Planning Commission at the time and everything, it seemed like a logical place to meet. So I was a little upset about that, but it worked out. We found other facilities. But I don't know how many other groups there in the city that might be facing a similar situation. So that's kind of like what brought all this up in the first place.
Let me jump in with some of the legal issues before Dana can talk about the facility issues. And I know that the Parks and Recreation Department has expanded and has some policies that deal with the availability of its public spaces on the same, at the same token. They have, they have resources out there. They have people out there at a number of different hours than City Hall hours. And so it's not a question of, are we having to keep people there at City Hall to accommodate a use? The reason, one of the reasons that the city, prior Mayor Lewis, when he was here, he changed it. And he changed it partly because we were doing a lot of remodels, and that's a legitimate issue. You have to have different attention in facilities when you don't have the same spaces available. But we've also had, in the attics, for instance, some facilities that were maybe tended to be open for a meeting, somebody walk away with the room full of chairs, or laptops, computers that have been taken out of there. So if it's not secure, that's a concern. And I think that was one of the areas that was involved in the decision that, not you, and I'm not suggesting in any way that it was anybody here, but that was an issue that prompted us to say, well, the meetings can occur at other locations, Parks and Recreation Facilities, for instance, or other areas too. But one of the things that I would throw out from a legal standpoint is if we opened the door for anybody, any non-city use, we open the door for any non-city use. The word "any" is capital A, I suppose, because we cannot then say, no, you cannot use our facilities, it has to be open to all. And that puts the city in a tough position, because it could make the city a target of some discontent. The wrong people come in, or people that maybe are not going to be as receptive to the concerns that the city might have, or might even just generate themselves a protest or whatever. You open the door for use by non-city facilities, it's open for anybody. And think of the worst group you'd ever want. You open it for the best group, you've got to open it for the worst group, and that makes sense. And that's one of the reasons why, if we have other facilities that are available, then that's, that's, which are also, Darrell knows this too, he could have the best group or the worst group in, he has to just make sure that they're addressing whatever issues that come out of that as fairly as they can without regard to whether, why it might not be the best group, or why it might not be seen as a favorable group.
Are you saying, then, that we really should not, or could not, implement a screening process?
No, we cannot. Because if a screening process involves First Amendment speech, we're going to run afoul of that. If somebody wants to come in here and have a community meeting, and that's all they have to tell us, we want to reserve for a community meeting, and they bring in issues that may not be well-received in all circles, you open the door, they're in. We cannot say, no, you don't get to come in. And that's part of the, that's part of the reasons why we defer to the Parks and Recreation Facilities, which can be better controlled because they do have staff. That may not answer all the questions, but again, we don't get the, we don't get the pleasure of screening once you say outside groups can use it.
Well, I accepted it with my homeowner associations, and everything has worked out, fortunately.
Well, and I'm not certainly suggesting otherwise.
But there were questions that, being a public facility, such as this is.
But a public facility that would realistically take some type of staff to make sure at least it's locked up, or whatever like that, and you might have a responsible group, but you might have the next one, it's not going to be responsible. We can't make it.
There was also some indication that the safety or security of the custodial staff might be a concern.
There was a little bit of that. And, you know, back in probably the last two years of Mayor Lewis's term is when the major remodel started in this building. And that's really what elevated that conversation to, we're going to need to kind of craft some policies around the use of the building. And, you know, this building specifically is designed for city-related business, meetings, the business that goes on day in and day out. And then we do expand it to other legislative groups, if you will. The Horse Racing Commission meets here, we've had the Port of Seattle meet here, the Port of Seattle Tacoma have met here, kind of the regional groups. You're bringing in a group, I think, this month, next month. And so, and during the normal workday, that completely makes sense for this building. And then, you know, kind of other private groups that need a place to meet, that makes things a little bit difficult, because we're not staffed for that here. And so as we have sort of moved along this remodel, and of course, upgraded technology, and have, you know, some things that do require a little, have a little bit more expense and risk to them if they're damaged, it sort of makes things a little more complicated. So our facility staff has been working up some policies, like even internally. You know, our staff is very protective of this room especially, because it's brand-new and all of the great stuff. And we don't want cake with colored frosting in here, and we don't want punch in here, and we don't, you know, those kinds of things, because we do want to make sure we have appropriate care of the space and keep it as nice as long as we can, because we spend a lot of money, and, you know, we want to keep it that way. a lot of money and, you know, we want to keep it that way. So I think as if we'd had conversations between legal and, and Rob a little bit about crafting that policy, because that is what we need to do. You know, we need to kind of standardize what we're doing so that it is a fair across the board and we're not, you know, kind of getting into something subjective to say, well, yeah, Bob, you're really trustworthy. And then someone else comes in, well, I don't, you don't seem trustworthy to me, so I don't think you can use our building. It does put us in a, in a real sticky spot that Dan doesn't like to have.
I think there were some, some folks that just wanted to have it on the record as to, you know, what the real reason and rationale behind it was.
Yeah.
And I think that, you know, you both adequately explained it.
Yeah, and it's one of those things, I, you know, Shelley brought up, I think, in a, in a funding discussion, that there are some things that have done, have been done as part of practice and not necessarily policy. And so this is where it's our job as staff to craft that policy so that we have, you know, all the bases covered and building uses are appropriate to what they need to be.
I think it would be, I think it would be really helpful in what you proposed, Dan, is when people do ask that kind of touchy question because that we provide them immediately with some alternatives.
Well, and that's one of the, that's one of the factors that went along with that is the Parks and Recreation Facilities experienced and increased availability at the same time that...
Yeah. We just need to keep saying that because initially I don't know if it's being heard, but if we keep saying it, they'll get the message.
Daryl, is there a cost to them coming in and renting those rooms or using those rooms?
Yeah, there's a nonprofit Auburn rate that those group would be eligible for. And then the library has a room that's available at no fee. And also we've, some of the groups meet like at the Round Table Pizza, that room has no fee. And we have a list when people aren't willing to pay the nonprofit resident rate that we attempt to send them to. But all of our rooms have a fee unless it's somebody we have an agreement with, like the steel headers that run the fishing derby for us or something like that. But we don't allow any free use anymore.
Does it vary on how large the groups are for the fee?
Yeah, that's, that's small class room, kind of on the left across from the main banquet room, it seats about 25-ish. I think that room's maybe $18 an hour or so. And then the large room is divided, it's got a lot of rates on that one. But our whole building has nonprofit Auburn resident rates, which is our lowest tier.
Well, we really appreciated the opportunity to use the facilities for the many years we did. And I appreciate, Dana, that you provided me with a list of possible other sources, which did pan out. And I appreciate that.
Councilmember DeCoursey.
So are we getting requests from nongovernmental entities and other nonprofits to use facilities?
No, I think a lot of things, there were just a lot of longstanding things that had been here just sort of over the years, you know, just kind of casual handshake kind of things. And then as we, I mean, we had, I think we had baseball umpires here, we had...
Model Railroad Club?
Railroad Club. Yeah, we had several groups. And then as the remodel started, it just, you know, made sense to try to find more appropriate places for them to be.
Do you hope other city halls open up their facilities to all groups?
What cities do in this state isn't 100% consistent. Again, some cities might have, Bellevue City Hall has many meeting rooms that they built in, that they intended to make available. And so they do open their door to a variety of different people. It all depends whether the facilities are available or whether it makes reasonable sense to make them available or not. And all we're saying is, is here in Auburn, we don't have that many facilities, we don't want to staff it. I mean, it's like Bellevue, there's a lot of people that you might find at different schedules. Here, we, we don't have that flexibility. There, there's going to be more people available after hours or what's typically after hours at the Parks and Recreation Department than you would here. And it makes sense that that would be where we would want people to be able to go.
Thank you very much. There are no more questions. We're going to move on to item E, which is transportation parks mitigation funds. Good old Shelley hopefully is going to help us with that again. And you've prepared some materials for us. Yes.
It's late.
It's late.
Okay. I prepared now, I prepared your memorandum with some very brief facts. Of course, if you get into the RCWs and the WACS, you can find a lot of information that is not quite this succinct. But the chart that is on the memorandum is directly from the Q2 report, 2017 Q2, and the balance that we have in our mitigation fund of different fees. And what I wanted to do is just discuss very briefly the difference between impact fee and mitigation fees. Whereas mitigation fees used to be very common before there was impact fees and those came out of SEPA when SEPA's were done and these mitigation fee contract agreements would be entered into. With the legislation for impact fees, we no longer need to have these SEPA agreements for mitigation. Occasionally we do and there are some mitigation fees that are collected. And the difference between the two are that one needs to be appropriated or expended within 10 years of collection and the mitigation fees expended within five years. And there are four system improvements for various things. We have school impact fees, fire impact fees, transportation impact fees, and parks impact fees. Those are the four impact fees that have been approved through legislation in this state. And this city levies on behalf of the school district their impact fees and the fire, fire district or fire department or the VRFA, a, an impact fee. We also do a parks impact fee and a transportation impact fee, which those funds are retained for use here in the city. And with that, I do want to point out that these fees cannot be used for repairs, maintenance, rehabilitation, that sort of thing. And they must be used for projects that are listed, that are in our CFP, which is our Capital Facilities Plan. We have a six-year capital facility plan, it's updated every year along with our budget. And it's a document with all these projects in it. We also put in our budget at the back, we put a CFP at that time for that year, for that, for 2017 at least it was in our last budget, that CFP. It's going to be amended again this year or next year. And the CFP will be updated, but of course the budget won't be touched again, or the document, the budget document won't be touched till the next, by a new budget. Okay, are there any questions?
Yes. So if we wanted to put the emergency phone light beacons and lights around Lesco Park and some of our other parks, and it's not in the CFP, then we can't do it.
That's correct. And then we have to make the decision if these emergency phones and lights are connected to the impact of growth. Or is it something that we want that's going to, that isn't growth-related?
Yeah. Okay. Councilmember Wagner.
The memo in the second line, it says, impact fees must be used to construct capital facilities for impacts directly related to development. We've been able to kind of move that around somehow. It doesn't have to be right next door to it, it has to be like a route that those people take. But what does, what does directly mean to you?
Well, it means that, you know, with, with transportation, when you're talking about street and transportation projects, generally traffic increase is pretty much related to growth, impacts of development and growth. And that's, that's pretty easy. One thing I did find out when I was researching this, you can also construct facilities that will service those, you can do system improvements, means facilities included in the CFP are designed to provide services to service areas within the community at large in contrast to project improvements. So the example I gave there was on a public works facility. So if you need to expand a facility like that is supporting streets or parks because you need more people, more trucks to service more park space or more street projects, you can use those fees in those lines also for those facilities.
I just know that, you know, over the, Rich, you and I and, and Wayne, over the, you know, three years have been looking at how we were going to get lighting and, and those emergency beacons. And the citizens are really concerned about safety out there. And that could be tied to growth in that there's a growing homeless population and/or our community is growing and it's having a greater impact because more people are spending time in that park. But this might be something that we want to look at the CFP because we've been holding off on that and it's a real safety issue.
I, I had a question.
Councilmember Troutman.
On the wetland litigation fees, where did that $68,835 come from?
That has come from where the city has had land that has been developed as a wetland and I think, I don't see you up here, but I think we've sold credits to some of that wetland where we've collected, yeah, it's, we've let them use some of our wetland for their development. And we've designated that and they've provided us fees for that. Or we've gone out, or the city has gone out and done some develop, done some plantings and things and we've recouped the cost plus something for that.
Okay, yeah, because I was just wondering, because it shows no revenue and it shows no expenditures and then all of a sudden you have that $68,000 there. So I go, all right, thank you.
And the idea is to do wetland improvements with that.
Has there been any discussion from the Parks Department on what they think they might be looking at for the park impacts fees? And those would have to be spent in 10 years?
Yes. Have there been any discussions?
Yeah.
I, I, not anything formal. I, I do know that there has been mentioned that we have that Jacobson Tree Farm property on Lee Hill and it would be nice to develop that park.
Councilmember Wagner.
In the chart, it's on the memo, we show an ending fund balance for the parks impact fees of $5,001,47. And then we don't show a lot of expenditures, but over on the budget, we show an ending balance of $1,000,200. How does that get to be so much smaller?
Because, okay, that's the budget. We've received, the ending fund balance in 2016 was much higher than we thought it was going to be when we put the budget together. And so what that is, is fund balance that was carried forward at the end of 16. We collected far more impact fees than we thought we were going to collect in 2016. Now, as far as the revenues, we've anticipated $600,000 in revenues this year in impact fees. We've collected two-thirds of that, a little bit more than two-thirds of that already. And on the expenditures, I'd have to go look at the CFP and see what is programmed into the budget for that.
So we really do have $5,001,47 a year to date, huh?
We do, as cash basis.
So that's good because I see we were putting more impact fees into various parks projects and makes sense if you had that big of an ending fund balance.
Yeah, he had a few things in there that he was doing some impact fees with and I'd have to go to the CFP and see what...
Councilmember Troutman.
So as Mrs. Wells said about, Deputy Mayor Wells mentioned about some of these parks that some of our citizens are concerned about safety, could we use some of that funding to put lights in those parks?
I'm gonna, I'm not going to say yes or no. I think that's more of a legal question and how those funds could be used. And you need to be able to say that that lighting is required, is directly related to, that need for lighting is directly related to the impacts of growth. And I don't, I can't, I can't say that.
It would be nice if we could have maybe an opportunity to talk to Daryl a little bit about some of the things we would like to see as he works with that great group because I think there might be a room to do a number of things. Mayor Baggers.
Yes, there are plans for some of those blue light phones to be installed in Lesco this year.
Oh.
I believe it's in the budget.
It is in the budget, yeah.
And I've spoken with, with our IT Director, Haugen, about that and...
The lighting is also, and it's the residual funds, is it not? It's the residual funds from the community and rec center. And we did the roadway and the parking improvements and the, thank you, Mayor, and the lighting was included in that.
One of the things I'd like us to do as a council is think about, as we look at our parks, especially our major parks, what we think are the basics that need to come with some of the major parks. As an example, lighting. Now, when I was listening to the presentation today on the historical cemetery up there, I don't see it getting a lot of night use and I don't think it gets vandalized a lot. And I don't think that, but you know, up at Lee Hill where we have the skate one and we have some facilities up at Lakeland and we have Lesco, maybe there is a need for some lighting. And in some areas, there might be a need for paved parking and that we should have some things that we see as basics that add to the safety of some of our larger parks. I don't know how we would go about doing that, maybe a discussion with, on, with Daryl so that he can share that with the committee. But I think that we're hearing all over, safety's a real issue.
Well, I asked Daryl tonight as I came in if I could have a list of all of our city's parks. And maybe it would be nice for our council to do a tour with Daryl to all of these parks and look and see where some of them are, are needing safety improvements or something like that. Or else just do it individually.
Yeah, yeah. And again, there's some ongoing, excuse me. Mayor Baggers?
I was just explaining that she could find the list online, Deputy Mayor.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful. Councilmember Baggers.
Just a quick question. This might be for Daryl, but...
He's calling you.
I guess basically if, if some of the master planning for the Lesco Park and the improvements, the, the growth that we have because we know we're going to be growing as a city and we're planning in that direction, are some of those costs and projects, like the lighting and all the other improvements that are coming up, are they part of the capital facilities plan? And if they're not, should they be?
The lighting at, at Lesco is in the capital facility plan. The, if you, if there's a nexus made between growth, the impacts of growth and lighting in the parks, then to expend it, we would have to put it, yes, in the CFP. It is not there now.
So they need to be a, kind of like a line item in the capital?
Yes, yes. Needs to be a project.
Councilmember Wagner.
I'm back to that same line that I asked you about before and it says, impacts are directly related to development. And it's not to say growth, it's just development. So like if we develop downtown, that's development, but it may not be growth. And so could we put lights across the street because...
We would have to show the, the nexus and I, you're, you're asking me if we can do that. And I have not done the research and the study to look into that.
I think we need to have Dan come back and tell us the difference between growth and development.
Well, growth and development, the reason I call it growth is because this is, was under the growth management plan, impact fees. So development and growth, I'm using interchangeably. I'm, I'm sorry for the confusion.
Well, it sounds to me that even before you do anything, you have to have it in the CFP?
Yes.
So, you know, maybe another time we could sit down and, and talk about what we'd like to see and get some things in the CFP. And then we can determine at that time, as we put them on the CFP, if they qualify as growth or development or whatever.
Well, when we put, now, when we put them in the CFP, we generally identify the funding source. So, but once something's in the CFP, sometimes the funding source does get changed, so...
So one of the other things I think we need to, to address and that sometimes we have a little bit of a shortfall is sidewalks. we have a little bit of a shortfall, is sidewalks. Okay. Dan, did you want to tell us the difference between growth and development?
I'm going to tell you, that depends totally upon different purposes and different statutes. So I'm not going to, not going to be able to give you much of an answer. But I will say this, there are some times when the criteria that you look at is whether or not a certain amenity is within the nexus recalled for because of some growth or development, whichever, whichever it is, versus something that might be nice to have, but is not required because of. And so those are issues that sometimes we have to look at from a legal standpoint. Is something requiring or triggering the need for something that, that may be nice, but it may not have been the result of a particular development? And that's, that's, those are things about which attorneys sometimes fight.
Councilmember Holman.
Well, I'd like to extend my personal commendation to Shelley, and I'm sure the rest of council will join me for the Washington State Auditor's 2016 report, another clean audit. I confess, I did not read all 105 pages. I read great tracts of it, but the boilerplate I skimmed. But congratulations for 20-some-odd years of clean...
Since the late 80s.
Yeah, unbelievable.
Yes, yeah.
Absolute clean audit, and thank you very, very much.
Again, you're welcome. Again, I'm just the face.
Well, it's you and your staff.
There's a whole party back there.
There's a whole group, and they, they need to all be patted on the back. And I'm sure my fellow council members will join me.
They will appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
I'm going to, now we're into municipal services, I'm going to turn the meeting over to Councilmember Baggis.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, we've already seen, they talked about the Pioneer Cemetery, and we are postponing items, Roman number four, C and D, as Deputy Mayor indicated earlier, for another meeting. So that leaves us with the district court briefing follow-up. Sir Rob of Roscoe.
Please take you for the last.
Oh, good evening. Last I was here, I gave a kind of overview on district court. And one of the questions was to look into Veterans Court and look at the logistics of operating one down here in Auburn. I will say, King County right now is primarily focused on establishing community courts. They're looking at doing two, one in the south and probably one either on the east or north King County area. We are in consideration for a location for that, but as are some of the other regional district courts that King County operates. Well, you should know, next week, I think they're trying to solidify their positions, and they're going to announce it. So we'll have some information there. As far as Veterans Court, they do offer Veterans Court every Thursday. Fortunately, it is on a regional basis, and it is up in Seattle. And that is a big hindrance for people down here in Auburn. So we don't do a lot of filing down there. And right now, King County's not interested in opening up regional Veterans Courts. They just want to, or, I'm sorry, individual Veterans Courts. They want to keep it more on a regional basis because they're not seeing the need expanded on the individual cities at that level. So right now, that's kind of where we're at. I just thought I'd report that back to the group.
Deputy Mayor Wells has a question.
Yeah, one time, or a couple of times ago when we talked to you, we talked about the need for an additional courtroom possibly down here at our courthouse. Would there, to help facilitate the amount of legal cases that they have, would there be anything to prohibit this room for being used as a courtroom, being that it is a governmental entity?
I think right now, the calendars are pretty well set. I don't see the need to expand. And actually, they're, we're operating, Covington is operating a court down at our district court. So they take up space, too. So that's one of the things we are evaluating as to whether or not we even want to continue that relationship. They do offset some of the costs that are then shared locally between Auburn and Covington for King County resources. But I don't see any preclusion, per se legally, from using the council chambers. It's more of logistics as to whether or not that's something that we'd want to explore and look into.
Councilmember Wagner.
We did use council chambers for court early in the process of the municipal court. And I was opposed to it from the beginning, and I was more opposed to it after we did it, because it brought a different feeling to city hall than I would like it to have. I'd like city hall to be welcoming to, to all citizens. And it seems like when we had distraught people talking lawyers out in the lobby, it was not that. So I'm personally, unless we can figure out a lot better logistics, personally against using the council chambers or any part of city hall for court.
Any other questions? Thank you, Rob.
Thank you.
I will turn it back to Deputy Mayor Wells.
Any other discussion items? Any new business? Let's look at the matrix so that we can move the Bill Pelosi items.
Have we gotten another update?
No. I always look for my matrix to be the colored pages.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
October 23rd.
Okay, so we're going to move, shopping carts, you said, to November 23rd?
October 23rd.
Okay, October. And mental health calls to October 23rd. Any other changes, upgrades, additions? Yes, Councilmember?
Sorry, I missed the item 3A today, the residential commercial development overview. Because my interest in that was to see if there's a way to shorten it and make it more pleasant. And I don't know whether, can anybody tell me whether they thought that might have came out of tonight, or whether we might want to put it on again for some more discussion?
Well, it's on TV, channel 21. And we are going to get their packet.
And we spent an hour on it, not just 30 minutes.
Yeah, it was an hour.
We went into all of that on the desk up there.
Did you come with some next steps for making it easier and more pleasant?
They had some wonderful, Rich, they had some wonderful things that they have already been doing, such as no longer requiring 10 sets of the plans electronic, and that's going to expand to even a broader market. They, with the long plats and the short plats, they've done some work there. And then taking it out of making administrative decisions as opposed to hearing the, some of the things that we've been talking about for the last year and a half, they're going to come back to us and do another presentation on single homes. But it was an hour long, and they're going to give us hard copy, and it's also on 21.
We have that next one scheduled, then? Should we put it on the matrix?
Not, I don't think, we'll wait until we hear from them. They didn't say anything. Okay, Councilmember DeCoursey.
Rich, I asked Jeff Tate to provide us with some information related to if there are any concerns, issues related to the regulatory process being impacted by state regulations. That came up during the Affordable Housing Advisory Board last meeting. We actually, we'll be discussing that again at the October 2 meeting of the Affordable Housing Advisory Board. But Justin Hill, go ahead and prepare some documentation for us to review on that. Because I think that may be another opportunity for us to look at, in some respects, deregulating and streamline the processes even more. But I was very pleased tonight in the presentation of the steps we're taking, where we are and where we're going with it, especially with the electronic views, reviews right now of the civil drawings. But, you know, we're poised to even expand that even further, which will really help both the customers and city staff in how we review our documents.
Okay, if there are no objections, I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you.